We are talking about Dawn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But she's got a lens on her.
I'm gonna call to order the city council work session being Tuesday, July 5th, year 2022, 3:01 PM. Invocation will be given to us by Councilmember Willis. Everybody please rest.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we just come thanking you, Lord, for this day. Thanking you for the beauty of the day. Thanking you for just the beauty of your presence, oh God. Heavenly Father, we thank you, oh God, for an opportunity to serve the great citizens of Odessa. And we pray, oh God, that we will never take it for granted what you have allowed us to do in this capacity. We pray, oh God, that as we go through this agenda, oh God, that we will have all citizens on our mind, Lord, and that we will just do what is best for the city of Odessa. We pray, Heavenly Father, for the peace of Odessa, and that may that peace begin with us. Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We praise you. We ask for forgiveness of our sins. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Everybody be seated. It will be item one, consider renewal of contract for school crossing guard services in agreement with ECSD.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members.
Good afternoon.
How are you guys?
Good.
What I have today is the renewal of contract for the school crossing guard services with all city management. I believe it is a one-year period, school period from 2022 through 2023. The total cost of contract is $469,368. That we'll be splitting the cost, I believe, with ECSD. And basically, that's simply a joint effort between ECSD and the city. That way, we're not utilizing police officers, pulling them out of duty in order to serve as a school crossing guard. I know that our cost here would be $211,215.60, and then ECSD will be coming up with the rest of the funds.
Where does those funds originate from, from the city?
I believe they come from the police department's budget.
Police?
Yes.
PD? That true? Okay.
Hopefully he says yes.
Not that I would deny.
Mr. Mayor, we previously had a line item for crossing guards to be a contract, excuse me, a service inside the city. We had part-time employees, and so that those funds have been allocated towards this contract.
Perfect.
Council, any questions? Anything else further?
I don't have anything else. That is it.
Thank you very much. Any other presentation? We're gonna move on to item two, open a public hearing to consider limousine service franchise application for Dama Beriga. Chief?
She wasn't able to make it, so I'm in place for her.
Okay.
No, no, you're fine. Two seconds.
Oh, okay.
Okay. This is an application for a limousine license submitted by Dama Briga, excuse me, Beriga. We have done all the background checks. All the paperwork is in order. There seems to be no issues with the application.
Okay, okay. You wish to speak on this?
She just asked in case I needed to.
Answer any questions?
Yeah, if y'all had any questions to ask.
I have a question. So is this open to open a public hearing? Are we considering this item right now? Are we gonna vote on it?
Today, I think it's for discussion purposes only.
Okay, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the, about the limousine service? You're the representative?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have any questions?
I just have one quick question. Did I, I was reading this on the agenda. Do you guys just have the one limousine?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you go ahead and just state your name for the record?
Mary Garza.
Mary Garza. Okay. Council, any questions? Need a discussion? Is there anything that you, Council, you wanted to?
No, she's done.
Okay. Is there, is there a, is there part of the plans to have more limousines, or it's just?
No, just the one.
Just the one?
Yes.
Okay. Chief, anything else on this?
Just to remind you that in action, the previous action, y'all did add social host to the limousine services. So that, that would wrap into this also, just to keep that in mind.
Right. And they're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anything else? We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you very much. Okay, item three, consider res- oh, I'm sorry. Seeing that there is no open, open public hearing, we're gonna go and close the, the public hearing to consider this, since this was just a discussion. We'll move it forward to the city council on Tuesday?
Yes.
So we don't need any official actual vote, right? Okay. Move on to item three, consider resolution authorizing Odessa Fire Rescue to accept and appropriate J-Rac funds. Chief Albers, that's not Chief Albers. How you doing, chief?
You're doing good. Chief Albers has asked me to just present this for J-Rac funds, $18,655. We get this annually as EMS county pass-through money from the state and to go towards EMS supplies.
Council, any discussions or questions? Chief, anything else? Thank you very much. We're gonna go to item four, consider resolution to approve the Parks Recreation Open Space Urban Landscape Master Plan. Mr. Penn? Now, this one's gonna take a little bit.
You need an extra one? I've got seven of them.
No.
No.
I'm going, I'm just going with Steve on this one. I don't need, I don't need another book.
Good afternoon, everybody. Finally, we've got the Parks Recreation Master Plan ready to go. We did take it before the Parks Recreation Advisory Board on March the 23rd, and the 23rd, they did go through the plan, and they did follow it with a recommendation to come forward to the council for adoption. It's been a long time in the making. COVID really took a toll on us. Right before COVID, we had finished pretty much all of our public discussions, our public meetings, and the survey process, and we completed that, compiled all the data. Now, this final addition is the executive summary, probably is a good synopsis of what pretty much the whole plan is about. And then we've broken it down into two sections. One is projects, and the other one is policy. And those are the recommendations for the next five years. The Texas Parks and Wildlife Department does require that we do update our plan every five years. The plan can be a 10-year plan, and you do an update every five years to make sure that you're still on track with your goals and your objectives. So Aaron Tully with Haven Associates is the one that compiled everything for us and got our plan in place, and I'll turn it over to him. We've got a little presentation that he'll go over with y'all.
Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for inviting me to come before you all and present the city's Parks Recreation Open Space and Urban Landscapes Master Plan. Hopefully, I'll try to get through this very quickly and just hit the high points, but I welcome any questions that you all might have during the presentation itself. We don't have to wait till the end of the, of the presentation. I, I trust you can see this on your screens.
It's in and out, but we'll, we'll get it.
Just to give you a quick snapshot of what will be going over, over the next five years that Steve had mentioned, let me back up and just say, this is a Texas Parks and Wildlife Department compliant master plan. As Steve had mentioned, they do like cities to update your parks' master plans every five years. We do look 10 to 15 to 20 years hence, as far as the requisite population projections that we're trying to appeal to. But, so just to give you a quick snapshot, we're looking at and making recommendations on dedicated funding mechanisms for the acquisition and facility development of parks throughout the city. Because of the closure of the UTPB park, we are recommending, you're considering the development of a new sports complex somewhere in Odessa to serve mainly Odessa's citizens. We are also, as I'll get into, we're recommending new parks, particularly in the east and north areas of Odessa, where there are no parks at this time. We also are recommending building the requisite staff to support the operations and maintenance of your park system, as well as additional park enhancements as funding allows for existing parks.
Can you stop once, one second, real quickly? I don't wanna stop you. I wanna make it clear that UTPB was not closed, and we did not close that. There's a real misconception that we closed that park. I get, I still hear from citizens. It wasn't a closure. UTPB still exists. That is, UTPB's park. We just know, we just didn't, they, UTPB chose not to renew the contract. It wasn't us.
Right.
I just, you know, so I just wanna make sure that, I'm not saying you said that, but it's just that those little words
No, exactly right.
will resonate. So, and so, but that is UTPB's property, and they are operating it. We just no longer participate because UTPB chose not to renew the contract with the city of Odessa. Just wanna make that for the record and that for you.
Of course, thank you.
I apologize. Go ahead. Continue.
So the Parks Master Plan is broken up into six key chapters, and I'll go over each chapter very briefly. And then there are several appendices that support, provides additional information for each chapter.
Well, that was a quick presentation.
Yeah. First chapter basically goes over all of the benefits that parks can provide a municipality. And let me just say, as planners, we always are looking at how can we make recommendations and develop strategies that will not only improve the economic well-being of a community's citizenry, but also their quality of life. We see parks, Parks and Recreation facilities, the entire park system has so much integral infrastructure, just like your sanitary sewer, your water systems. Parks are equally as important as all the other kind of transportation infrastructure for our community. As I will get into, the city of Odessa is suffering from a deficit in the provision of parks throughout the community. The last park that you all developed was, I believe, in 1994, and that's when your population was about 91,000 people. So almost 30 years later, and a population of almost 30,000 more people, you now, with the, the non-renewal of the UTPB park, you actually have less parkland than you did 30 years ago, or 28 years ago. So that was a concern, and that's one of the overarching kind of objectives of this plan, is to how, is how can we continue to provide additional parks and recreation facilities? So we did develop a demographic projection. Again, we utilized 2018 data because 2020 census information was not available at the time. But so we were using about a little over 118,582 persons to make our current kind of analyses. But then we're projecting a 2040 population of about a little over 151,000 persons. So that's, that is the population that we are trying to appeal to in the, with the provision of additional parkland, recreational, sports, and other facilities. Excuse me. Throughout the, the development of the Parks Plan, we did utilize several comparison communities throughout West Texas. You can see, we used seven different communities, all of whom are, or which are comparable in a lot of ways to Odessa, particularly Midland. And we looked at a whole variety of metrics when it came to comparison communities as far as the park acreage per thousand people, the number of park staff, the staff, the Parks Department budgets, whether or not there was a parkland dedication ordinance, several different factors, number of community centers, recreation centers, et cetera, just so we could understand, you know, where is Odessa kind of fitting in the larger scheme of things with respect to your neighbors? We did formulate in the beginning of the plan, five provisional goals that we carried throughout the plan, hoping to confirm these at the end of the plan, which we did. The first goal is to develop a balanced distribution of parkland and facilities throughout the city to serve all of your constituency. Second goal was a diverse and equitable range of recreational programs and activities. Third, safe and accessible trails. As you know, trails, hiking and walking, running, are one of the top pastimes for people around the country. And so we were really pushing to make sure that we had the adequate trail system in the, in the years to come for the city and its, and your residents. The fourth goal was to really consider an enhanced built-in environment that engenders a more of a sense of place with respect to gateway, gateway features and amenities, different landscape enhancements throughout your key corridors, districts, and neighborhoods. And then fifth, we were looking at a fiscally sustainable operation and maintenance of Odessa's parks and facilities. So those were the key goals, forgive me, that, that led and guided the development of this plan throughout its duration. The second chapter, Odessa Parks Today: Existing Conditions, we really looked at all of the things, all of the services that the Parks Department provides with regard to what parks are available, what events are the, is the city responsible for, who, what other organizations are providing recreational programs for your residents? We utilized throughout the development of the Parks Plan, the National Recreation and Parks Association, the NRPA standards and metrics, as well as their classification system. So as you can see, we did divide the, the city's parks into several different classifications, community parks, neighborhood parks, and special use parks were the principal ones that we, we focused on. But you can see in that map that all of the parks are really west of the University of Texas Permian Basin. So there are really few, very few parks to the north or to the east of Odessa. The city does rely heavily on the provision of recreational programs by other organizations. So we had numerous conversations with, again, other organizations, as well as those who provide public art and other kind of quality of life amenities for the citizens of Odessa. And so as I've mentioned, we did look at key neighborhoods, districts, and corridors and gateways throughout the community. And we inventoried all of the public art around the city as well, just to understand where are more of the aggregations of public art around the community. And one of the recommendations that we did have was to develop a public art trail that would link these different pieces of public art to, again, foster tourism and enhance economic development. Chapter three, based on the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department kind of criteria, we developed, developed a demand-based assessment, a standards-based assessment, and a resources-based assessment. Those are three criteria of Texas Parks and Wildlife. And we also developed an operations assessment to understand what were the requisite staffing kind of challenges that the department was currently facing in its operation and maintenance of your park system. Beginning with the demand-based assessment, this was basically the demand, what we heard during our robust public engagement program. We had many, many list, small group listening sessions, 24 different listening sessions. We held six open houses, one within each council district. And then we also facilitated the development of an online community need survey, which enjoyed a little over 800 responses during the period it was open. And so we learned a lot from meeting with people, what their, what their needs were from a Parks and Recreation standpoint. One of the things, and there were probably 20 to 24 questions, I can't remember how many questions we had for the survey, but one of the ones that stood out was the support from the respondents when it came to a parkland dedication ordinance. And as I point out here, over 78% of respondents said they would be willing to pay more for a new home and a new subdivision if that additional funding went for additional park and trail improvements within their neighborhood. So that shows, or kind of illustrates how important the provision of parks and open space amenities are for a subdivision. So one of the recommendations that's coming out of this, this Parks Master Plan is the amending your code of ordinances and developing a parkland dedication ordinance for the provision of additional parkland and trails, trails and open space amenities within new residential developments. And we can talk more about that shortly. The standards-based assessment basically utilizes National Recreation Parks Association metrics regarding key standards as far as the number of parkland acres per 1,000 residents, the number of facilities per 1,000 people, and then basically the service area or the distribution of parks throughout the community. And when you look at the metrics and compare that to the total acreage of, of your park system, which is 458 acres, it equates to about 3.9 acres per 1,000 population, or 1,000 persons. And that was using 2018 populations, what the 2018 population was. When it was now, if we use 2020 data, it would be a little bit higher, about 4,000 persons higher than the 2018 data. But it's basically 3.9 acres per 1,000 residents. Just so you can compare this a little bit, we did utilize the NRPA's peer communities, and those were all the communities that were from 100 to 150,000 populations. And you can see that 3.9 acres per 1,000 residents is well below even the lower quartile of the peer communities of the NRPA. Then when we compared the level of service standards and the acreages to your comparison communities, you can see, again, at 3.9 acres per 1,000 population, you're well below, unfortunately, your sister communities in West Texas. So again, just some metrics to kind of defend the argument that there is a deficit in the provision of parkland for Odessa's citizens at this time. When looking at current and future acreage, I would direct your attention to all the red numbers. The first in the recommended level of service standard for 2020, you can see that with the provision of neighborhood parks, you're at about an 8.7 acre deficit right now. Compared to community parks, you're a little over 81 acre deficit. That's now. But if you look at the recommended level of service standards for your projected population of 151,000 in 2040, that climbs quickly to almost 42 acres of neighborhood parks and 140 acres of community parks deficit. So clearly, this is an issue not only now, but will be in the future. In principle, we like to think that nobody should have to drive to a park. You should be able to be within walking distance of a neighborhood park or a pocket park, for example. So this map shows that each park, all of your 35 parks have a one-half mile radius drawn around each park, and it shows that 53% of residents live within a 10-minute walking distance or a half a mile from a park. So that's, that's great when it comes to central and west Odessa. When, when you look at east Odessa and north Odessa, there's still a significant deficit there in the provision of parks. So that's where we are recommending that we focus on additional park improvements. We also, as part of this whole Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we did have a subconsultant develop a sports field study that informed the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we do wanna go over a little bit of the, our analysis as far as what the deficits are when it comes to the provision of athletic facilities. So again, beginning with the demand, these were the principal groups that used and relied on, on, on city facilities, athletic facilities, diamond fields for softball and baseball, rectangular fields for soft, for soccer and football. Currently, the Girls' Softball Association, they are continuing to use UTPB's facilities. The Odessa Soccer Association, now they are principally using the facilities at Sherwood Park rather than UTPB. And then the men, the Adult Softball Association, they have, unfortunately, they've just completely disbanded. So they are no longer a group that are enjoying playing softball. So unfortunately, and that was because of the lack of facilities.
I'm sorry, you, what was that last word? You said lack of facilities?
Yes, sir. Right.
I disagree with that, but okay.
Okay, well, please let me know what, what you'd like to talk further about.
Okay.
So here you can see basically the inventory of facilities that are available when it comes to diamond youth fields, as well as rectangular fields for practice and game. You can see the primary ones are, fields are in Sherwood Park, many at Floyd Gwynn Park as well. When our subconsultant developed the athletic field assist assessment, you can see that most of the fields are, were rated at a C or worse. McKinney Park did receive a B, and of course, the Comanche Trail East Soccer Complex received an assessment or a grade of A. So those were in great shape. The others are in significant need of, of renovation, mainly the fields, but also some of the support facilities as well, bathrooms, lighting, bleachers, parking, concessions, all of those kind of support kind of facilities.
Quick question. On that, it's showing Floyd Gwynn as a D, and Steve, this might be more to you. But with all of the money that we're investing in that, isn't that going to improve that?
I would, it would be an A.
I would hope.
Yeah.
You should, right?
That kind of money, you better believe it.
That, this was prior to those improvements. We did, while there are a lot of athletic fields within neighborhood parks, we didn't include those in our overall inventory, primarily because they don't have the requisite support facilities, your parking, bathrooms, concessions, lighting, those kind of things that, that make them game-worthy. Now, they, they are suitable for practice, but we, our consultant felt that we should take those out of the equation when it comes to the supply of game-ready fields for the residents.
So everything on this list?
I'm sorry?
Everything on this list is associated to that game-ready fields?
They, that's correct. These would be practice. If you could, you could certainly use them for practice, but because they don't have the support facilities required for a game-ready field, we did not include those in the overall analysis.
Okay. We'll come back to that. I'd like to talk about that.
Okay. So basically, when you look at athletic field level of service standards, with the not having UTPB Sports Complex in the equation anymore, there is a need for six additional girls' fast pitch softball fields, five additional diamond fields for baseball and softball, three additional football fields, and one additional soccer field. So that is the result of not having the facilities at UTPB Sports Complex. We did also look at each athletic field and determine what kind of facility upgrades when it came to support facilities, what kind of thing, upgrades needed to happen over the next 10 years or so. Of course, what was paramount was the consideration and recommendation of developing a whole new sports complex. But there were also several other improvements that were being recommended for all of the different sports fields. We did look at, you know, whether or not developing a sports complex would enable the city to then participate in a greater kind of sports tourism program for the purposes of economic development. And while this could happen, you're, we looked at all of the different sports complexes around Odessa within about a two-and-a-half hour drive. And there, it is a fairly mature market when it comes to sports tourism, but that doesn't mean that the city could not get into that, into that market from an economic development standpoint. But we have shown, studies have shown that these sports complexes never pay for themselves entirely. There's always like a 71% return on investment. So the city would always need to be subsidizing these kind of athletic complexes, although that there are significant reasons for doing that, of course. Although that there are significant reasons for doing that, of course. So as Steve had mentioned, we did identify key policy priorities as well as uh several project-related priorities. The first policy priority was, again, amending the code of ordinances to include a parkland dedication ordinance that could include provisions for a fee-in-lou requirement and a development fee. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Secondly, developing a parkland acquisition program to satisfy park needs in areas that are already developed and figuring out determining criteria for the sec- selection and acquisition of of land for uh needed park space. Third, determine methods of funding development and maintenance for parks. And we're currently working with the city of Lubbock. And as you probably know, Lubbock utilizes public improvement districts heavily in their uh operations and maintenance of their parks, especially uh in newer newer residential developments. Additional incentives might uh that one might consider are density bon- bonuses where the city could provide a developer, for example, increased densities within a residential subdivision in order to enable more open space to be provided. So you'd have, you'd still have the same net number of houses being constructed, albeit on a little slightly smaller parcels, but then that would then open up uh land for the provision of parkland in a subdivision. That's just one example, the type of incentive that would be available to the city. Fourthly, developing a school park site development initiative. Uh, in Houston, we have a, an organization called Spark, which is a school park program. It's actually a nonprofit that was developed by the daughter of Eleanor Tinsley, who's a famous council uh member in the city of Houston. Uh, Eleanor Tinsley Park was named after her. But um, this is a program whereby this nonprofit puts together uh various resources, including uh nonprofit or funding streams from other nonprofit or philanthropic philanthropic organizations, uh partners with the city and the school district to create school uh parks that are open to the public, but are kind of are fenced off from the rest of the school grounds. But they're built on school grounds. And we have in Houston probably like two hundred and fifty of these Spark Parks. And this is something that we're actively pursuing uh with the city of Lubbock as well. So this could be a real opportunity for, in order to provide this uh your residents with additional parks utilizing pieces of school property. Key project improvement priorities. Again, the number one uh priority was locating and developing a new sports complex and aquatic facility. That was what quickly rose to the top in all of our different strategies and recommendations. Second, developing neighborhood parks throughout east and north Odessa. Third, redesigning McKinney Park because with the uh expansion of Interstate twenty, you're gonna lose a significant portion of of McKinney Park, but it's gonna screw up the whole circulation of that park as well. So you're gonna need to develop, excuse me, another master plan for how you can reroute circulation so that park continues to function uh properly. Uh, fourth, Comanche Trail East uh expansions, our improvements, expanding further south to accommodate uh additional athletic fields. Fifth, uh developing a whole new aquatic facility at Floyd Gwynne Park. Sixth, aquatic facility upgrades at Sherwood and Woodson Parks. Seventh, developing a master plan for Jim Parker Park, which is considered a neighborhood park, but it also functions more as a community park. And so we believe that there are athletic facilities that could be improved to meet the need, the athletic uh field need uh of your community. Number eight, developing uh Comanche Trail upgrades south of Interstate twenty, particularly um new trail systems, new parking. The pond currently has a leak in it, so uh fixing the leak in that pond is very important. Uh, the ninth priority was developing a whole lighted trail system within the Parks Bell Ranch area as well as additional park improvements. Tenth, looking more at the urban landscape, uh your built environment, thinking about where we can improve uh main city gateways, entrances into the community. We had made several recommendations to that end. And then number eleven was renovating both Noel Plaza and Lincoln uh Plaza. Excuse me, Noel Heritage Plaza and Lincoln Plaza, so they functioned better uh to serve the event kind of needs of the community. So that's where we are. Those were the key recommendations that we worked together with the Parks Department on when it comes to both policies and recommend- rented, recommended projects, excuse me. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Steve, you wanna come up to the? So the action, I mean, it, this is a presentation, but you're talking about a resolution, correct? So to support the master plan, what does the resolution bind the council and future councils, which will, we will have an update in five years, correct?
That's correct.
Well, what does it bind the 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 council and future councils to the resolution or to the master plan specifically?
Um, we'll have a resolution will be attached.
We're gonna speak into the microphone, that way we have it in recording.
The, the resolution that will be attached and the very last sentence is, this serves as a guide for the council and future councils. That's the very last sentence on there to look at the needs of the city in the future. But you're not.
According to the plan. So specifically to what's in the master plan is what we are bound to and.
You're not bound. No, you don't have to. It it's strictly a guide.
Well, the reason why I say that is because, you know, when uh we ask about, hey, can we look into that? Well, it doesn't conflict. It it if it conflicts or doesn't go according to the to the master plan, that means like it's off the table, can't be considered.
Oh, no, sir.
So, because I asked one question about, because I'm getting residents in south, south Odessa are asking about that parking lot. And it's been a dirt parking lot forever. So there is no way, from what I've understood, to address it through, you know, uh through the budget of the city. So I I requested, you know, can the foundation look in into it? And the response was, it's not in the master plan. So basically like, so we can't even look into it. Get a lot of complaints when it's windy, right? Yeah, remember, you know, the parking lot at McKinney where the baseball fields are, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all dirt. So you have the kids from Floyd Gwynne playing there. So when it gets dusty, they get blown out. So they've requested about, you know, could we look into?
Blacktop in the hitters.
A blacktop. I said, I don't know, let's look into it. So that's why, that's why I'm asking, is it, does the ma- a master plan give us flexibility or not flexibility? Uh, you know, are we bound to, you know, if it's not in there, no, you can't do it. And so I was under my understanding, you know, that that we're bound to it, which is fine, but I mean, just wanna make sure that we know, you know, what it can and what what it does and what it doesn't do, what's the parameters?
No, we're not. It's it's strictly a guide.
Okay.
That our intent is to follow that and then it followed with the state, most importantly. If we go for state funding, that's, it's very important that we have it. But we're not bound to it.
And you may not have the answer, but let let me start off some of the questions. Um, so a lot of our parks, um, especially in the old, in the, in the old area, you know, like Floyd Gwynne, that was, that was county. So a lot of the park system, save Odessa, adopted, but in the early seventies, mid seventies for the for the, for the most part?
We were under a lease with the county for all the, the entire park system, including Goldsmith, Pleasant Farms and and Gardendale until um nineteen ninety. We took it on from what I'm seeing documentations from maybe the early eighties, about eighty fours when we stepped into that agreement. And then in the nineties, we took it over in ninety one by deed and they paid us a little bit of money for a lease for.
To now, even now?
No.
When did it, when did that end? About ninety?
Oh, two, about five years, I think, worth of, after that points of about ninety five, I think is when the county ended that.
That's when you started going into, looking into UTPB because there was a deficit in 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 the east side. Because we know we had nothing over there. And that was developing, that's why we did uh UTPB.
Sure is.
And then we looked at the Metropolitan Park on Yukon and Granville, which didn't materialize because ECISD chose not to go forward with it.
Sure did. That's correct.
So the thing is, is that the, the park system wasn't necessarily built. It was adopted into, and we've been bound to that to this day. That's why I, you know, that's why I say, you know, some of the deficit wasn't of our doing or lack of planning. It was basically just what not. And and I know you don't know, I'm just may make sure that the record sets straight that, you know, this is something that was inherited and it's been a deficit.
Uh, we spent about fifty five million dollars on improvements in the thirty two years I've been here.
Yeah. And and so here, here, here's another question. And and so when we sat there and talked about it, the deficiency of game-ready fields in some of the parks, well, Salinas used to be baseball. So when was that? That was redesigned to be a green space. So the baseball fields are gone. Also at Slater, that was softball. That was, that church leagues played there. It used to be little league, then it went into church league. And then those were taken away. Now it's green spaces, the, the dog park. Belair, that's on. Thirty first and Dixie, right? That was a baseball field and now that's green space. And then.
Woodson?
Wood, well, yeah.
We had two, we had two fields at Woodson.
Yeah, now that's green space.
That's the green space.
And then we did the aquatic center. And and then we did uh.
Southside baseball field.
Central, where the, where they used to be little league, then it became girls softball.
We had five fields there.
And then, so the fields got taken away. So what, so was deficiency that exists now is because we moved from the from, from the master plan, from athletic fields, game-ready to green space. And that's what exists today?
Primarily because most of those facilities were all abandoned.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, with the girls softball, you know, the, the whole push was to go come to UTB when in ninety five when we did the UTPB.
Right. Southside baseball field hadn't been, nobody, I don't recall anybody ever using it as game fields except for the first maybe two years I was in. I started, but we never had an organized league there.
So then we, then in OIBA, we, we had no, we, there was no, there's no baseball league at Salina, at Salinas. And then McKinney lost its uh uh youth baseball because there was no participation. Woodson, I'm, I'm assuming it's the same thing.
Correct.
So basically, we saw a reduction in youth, youth, in baseball. So now primarily we're at where now Jim Parker and Sherwood.
Sherwood and Floyd Gwynne.
And Floyd Gwynne. Okay, so here's a question on, on, on the, on the Jim Parker. So I've spoken to the, to the, to, to the league there. They said that they're, they're landlocked where they can't add facilities there or another baseball field. Is that true? I mean, that came from them. So I'm, I'm asking the question, you know, are they accurate in that?
But there's, I think the recommendation says that Jim Parker needs to be master planned. Cause when I've talked to him through the years, the first thing they wanted to do is obliterate that hill and put another field there. Well, as we struggle with more kids moving further, 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 further east and we're sitting there with the big watch of land that's undeveloped out there, we need to look at the either the increase of participation from kids on the east side, if that's gonna serve as a logical place, or do we sink a lot of money into Jim Parker? And that's why I've got in, in the master plan to look at master planning Jim Parker Park. Is it gonna be a community park or is it gonna be a neighborhood park?
Okay.
And so there is that possibility, um, landlocked because another big field there, it's gonna be a baseball complex. And there's, it's not.
Like Jim Parker?
Yeah, if if they do another big field there and they make it three, then we'll just have it, it's just gonna be baseball. Cause it's so close to university, it, it's hard to get any other practice fields in there.
Yeah.
And then the parking, we do have, uh, it's actually worse than what we have over at McKinney. I've got that as the number one priority in our supplemental list to get that repaid.
And the only parking is they have to the south because you have the private parking to the church on the other side.
Correct.
You're not supposed to utilize.
And there's uh.
Didn't become problematic on the road.
It's over there on base material and it's, oh, it's.
Yeah, that parking is bad.
It's bad, real bad.
Okay, what about the Sherwood situation? You know, since that's become utilized, I mean, the thing is, is that that became green space and now it's being utilized for the soccer. And so it's a parking situation too, you know, so.
It is.
You know, where, 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 where are we with that? Because now that's the hub for the soccer.
We, we've got to master plan Sherwood and make sure that we allocate spaces for ingress and e- and getting in and out of there. Um, we need restrooms for soccer.
Yeah.
But we're gonna have to pull a line. If we go from the south, it's gonna have to come from two blocks down underneath the streets, underneath the parking lot, over there to the. It's quite extensive. So um, we need to master plan it and get that planned out so that we don't end up with a lot of things going on that don't work well with one another and spaces where athletics, where we need to have playgrounds and expansion for our, at some point, hopefully our aquatic center needs to go to the north. They wanna build soccer fields there now, so temporarily, that'd be fine.
You have, you have space to move the aquatic center to the north?
Add to it.
Oh, add to it.
Another phase.
Okay. Um, so when you address the, the parking situation, will that take away green space or poten- potential athletic?
Definitely.
And to a large foot- footprint?
There's, if you can imagine to the uh south of the uh baseball complex, it would go all the way from that area all the way to, I believe, that's forty fourth, I believe, that's over there. So and and that's a big chunk of cars, plus they would put a set of bathrooms over there.
Okay, there's another uh, another question is, um, well, really two. Now, I, I, Dr. Mary did approach me about the idea of city and school and utilizing a lot of their green space. Um, but since we hadn't done the master plan, so we really can't discuss until we see where we're going with it. So there's an option there. Now, I, I don't know what he really meant by that, whether it's elementaries or, you know, where, where he's looking at then and what, to what extent. You know, twenty five years ago, we tried to approach that. It's just school, the ECISD, well, the school board wasn't really amenable to that. And we were looking at developing, um, which is now where we're at the visit. They have space there, but it just we, there, there, there was, just the condition was just favorable. The school board just, there was just a few members that uh, you know, it, it would became a location issue. Um, I don't know if we're, we're back to be able to, to address that.
I hope so.
To address some of the things that, you know, the master plans address. It, there's definitely potential, but uh, final question. How much, what are we losing at McKinney with the expansion and the widening of I twenty? What, what, no, seriously, what do we, what do we?
The plans that I've seen, it looks like it's gonna be coming over uh to about the edge of where the existing Starbright Village drive-through is. It's gonna, it'll, it'll come over to the edge of that. We're like, we usually put their little gift cards out there. That'll, that's gonna be.
So they're extend, so they're extending their easement?
Pretty much. It's gonna, I, I think you might have seen the last of the plans, but it's gonna come over, um.
When are we gonna see that?
About into the, about another twenty five feet into the park. Cause our cards are on the right of way.
So we're gonna, are we gonna have to move utilities and things of that nature?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah. Bad as I hate to say, I'm not sure when that, their timeframe is gonna be, but uh, we've got a lot of electricity and and probably have to bring in the roadway some, be able to fit everything on there.
So you're doing anything in the master plan to extend south of the interstate? We, there's space back there.
Yes, the, and uh, there's another hundred and twenty five acres that's across three eighty five to, um, that could potentially be something in the future. And all, we've got a lot of needs right now that um can need to be addressed.
What's the issue with the pond? What, what do you mean it has a leak?
Many years ago, um, and two or three engineers before uh Tom, the thought was the hydraulic pressure would be going eastward towards the draw. So I'm like, okay, that's fine. They dredged out the existing pond and they put a liner for the hydraulic pressure on this side going towards the draw. They didn't line this side over here. So when we filled it up, the water went underneath the liner and went to the draw. So we came back with a second liner, dredged it and connected this liner to that liner. Well, the whole thing has shifted a little bit now. And so we got some of the liner sticking out of the ground over here and now it's gone below ground and it's going underneath, causing it to settle. And so, and we've got some seams that are exposed, so it's leaking. We lose about four feet every three days.
Wow, that's a lot.
But we're keeping the draw wet. And we got the, and we have a water well and we keep it. A little fountain out there in the middle, that's a water well that keeps it full.
The old muscolites at the uh senior field and everything that was at you, at uh, at Floyd Gwynne, is that being reutilized?
The, the senior field at Floyd Gwynne?
Yeah, remember we had purchased the, the muscolites and then the, 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 the association had upgraded all their line. Is that being reutilized?
Not their lines. Their line system, I was, I was really surprised. I mean, it was. Not their lights, their light system, I was, I was really surprised. I mean, it was thirty years old. So we have a new, new LED light system that's out there. The senior field that was there, um, we did away with that.
No, yeah, I know that, but I was just wondering if we had purchased those muskell, the muskellites that, that you see at, uh, at the Little League World Series.
Their, um, their comment was, when we looked at either putting new fixtures on that system, they said. You're gonna spend the same amount of money as if you just buy new. By the time it's all said and done, they, they were pushing close to thirty years old. Which I was, I was shocked.
Yeah, yeah, that was back in the mid-nineties when we did that.
Okay.
C- council questions?
I've got just wanted a bit of information for the, for the council that be mayor might not be aware of, but council member Shawna and I have been working with staff. We all went to Lubbock to look at these PIDs that they have up there. And, uh, last week, we met and, uh. Was it that last week, we go last Monday? And we met to go over the final la- language tweak in Lubbock's ordinance. It was beaten bow on this new property that they want us to, to annex. They wanna put a PID in there, so they're gonna make a presentation to us shortly, pretty quick, I think, Philip.
Yes, sir, I believe it's the goal for them to be at the next work session.
Next work session, and then we've got the ordinance, I guess legal's working on the language. It was, cause Philip and I and Michael, you, you haven't seen it yet. We just gotta go for Philip.
It's coming.
It's coming.
First time hearing about it.
Yeah, we just met the other day and tweaked the, the language with the, with the document with Lubbock. A few things, didn't change very much because it's a pretty good document, we think, so. Uh, we think that the only way that works, Steve, is, is, is a new development for the PIDs. Uh, it's too hard, because what happens is, just for the council's edification, you've got to go in and get every homeowner. In other words, just two hundred acres that Beetham Bow's considering building homes on. The price of that PID will be in each one of those homes. And so the city has no obligation until they, they turn the, it gets profitable, they turn it over to the city. So it's a real, very, very good situation for us, but it's only in new developments because you couldn't get, if you had a hundred residents. You had to get everybody to sign off on an old piece of property and that's, Lubbock tried that and they said that doesn't happen. So we, well, we were there, I mean, we met with, you know, so they, they tried that once in Lubbock, it didn't go anywhere very fast, but. Since the developer will be the single owner until they sell lots, then that's the place to do it, so what, what we feel like. And what we're bringing to the council shortly, I think, I hope. Anyway, it's in your court. Or Michael's, so anyway, that is, but, so that is, I'm proud to say that, that's tied on your list and it's. And we're there, we're, as far as council and Shawna and I are, we're, we're both there and ready to bring it to council.
They're very effective.
They're looking at this.
They're very, they're very effective.
Yeah, so.
Steve, are you aware of the Wildcatters Trail?
Yes.
Are, are we including that somehow in our plan?
I've not, it's not a dedicated park site.
To bring everyone up to speed, it'll be a hiking, biking trail from the stadium in Midland. All the way to UTPB campus, Odessa campus. And of course, then I'd like to see, and this may be more of Philip's deal, but it, I'd like to see it. Some kind of bike trail from downtown to UTPB.
It's, it's, that, that's part of the master plan from the onset, yeah.
Yes, sir, that is in the master plan. We had actually developed the first phase of that multi-use trail from Scarborough Sports Complex. To UTPB, um, and then in the plan, we have recommended extending that further to Odessa College. And then down to downtown. So we had, we had proposed two or three different alignments for consideration. The, the optimum alignment would have been right along building up an off-street recreational trail within the University Avenue. Uh, right of way when it was realigned, but, uh, we hadn't started working on this yet.
But the plan is to, to take, uh, Comanche Trail. And then find a way to, whether we incorporate downtown, we eventually make it to the park. Uh, and so.
Cool.
A, a safe bike trail within the city.
You can set up a little lane on Oakwoods that's about three feet.
I think about that every single time when I turn.
So I hope you're in bad spots.
Yeah, uh, council, any further, uh, any other questions?
With just, just one basic one. How are we gonna pay for all this? So somebody got any great ideas? Cause I haven't seen a whole bunch of cash laying around. Is that an agreement or disagreement or you don't know?
That's a good question. Right now, it's, uh, remains to be determined.
Yeah.
I think there were some ideas on, but it's gonna take quite a bit of effort to make this.
How many, you're doing a sports complex and a, I mean, a sports complex is gonna cost what, a hundred million, seventy-five million?
We were saying on the low end, like twenty-eight million, on the high end, about forty million.
That's less than I would thought.
Well, yeah.
Not including land acquisition.
Yeah, that's just a compass, not a land acquisition, um, so twenty-eight million is the low end is what we have right now. Uh, but the thing is, is that what's up in the air in the discussion here is when we talk sports complex. Uh, in deterrence, price goes up or more, how much amenities you put into it, so are we, cause one of here identifies. Uh, diamond, it's a diamond complex. And then you have another one that's a soccer complex, you know, um, several times I know we spoke into the association. City owns that eighty acres, ninety acres south of town. And I think there, uh, a lot of these, uh, soccer complexes are being built in flood zones. And I know Millen has a bunch of them in their, in their dry, uh, basins, um, Lubbock does too, um. Soccer fields, even for practice or u- or utilizing for fields, uh, then it becomes, is it just local uses or it becomes, uh, you know, kinda. Of a hotel motel tax. Then that becomes a whole different dynamic of, uh, conversation. And so, yeah, and so then there's all the hindrance is, is location, um, what's available as far as, uh, you know, land acquisition. Is it attached to schools, is it attached to subdivisions, is it attached to?
I think another question is, you know, if we go this route and we do the sports complex, is it gonna be, it's not gonna be free for use, right? It's gonna be, uh, rented out to teams. So, um, in that aspect, you know, we keep mentioning in this presentation that UTPB is no longer available, which it is.
It is.
It's the same, it's the same thought process is the teams can rent out the fields. And I know, I know that because the club that my son plays for rents out the practice space. There's probably ten clubs right now that are renting out that space. That field gets, it's pretty packed on Tuesdays and Thursdays at practices. So, I mean, we still have, the, the, the community still has access to UTPB, it's just. It's just that they have to pay for it now, which would be the same thing once we built sports complex. More active, but those have to pay for it too, so.
Sports management.
Right.
Sports management scheme that, you know. Do, do you move to sports manager? Cause when the complexes are built, you usually have a third party. But you're absolutely right, even when the sports management, they don't pay for themselves, so it becomes part of the depart, of the city's department. And the continuing funding.
Yeah, yes, sir.
You know, just, I mean, you're always gonna, it's, it's not gonna turn a profit.
And so, yeah, I'm, Steve, I think I've told you this, but mayor, this, to the council's knowledge. Uh, I've been working with Larry Bell for about the last two months. Uh, he's been out of the country for a couple of weeks, he's back now, but when he left, uh, he and I took a, a long drive around the ranch. And he showed me where he has a hundred acres that he would like us to build a sports complex. Now, whether we buy it or it gets donated, that's, that's a question I can't answer right now, but, but he's got a space identified. That would fit our needs real well, it's not in a flood zone, by the way, mayor. And, uh, it's very accessible. Uh, and so he had me send, uh, some pictures of, uh. Sports complex that. We might like to look at, I think, uh, we sent him, I sent him a couple, one was from Round Rock and. And his engineers over at, uh, Park Hill Smith and Cooper are working with, uh, I think that Round Rock layout. At that space on his property, just so happens that Park Hill Smith and Cooper did that complex. So they're right from there with it. Yeah, you've been there?
Yes.
Yes, I've looked at pictures of it and so that's the one that I, I liked and there was another one somewhere else that I liked, but. Uh, anyway, that one was, was really good, so, uh, he and I have a meeting coming up, but anyway, that, that's. Percolating, if you will, and Larry's interested in doing something up there and. Cause, uh, D R Horton's got options on land up there for another three thousand homes. So that whole area, and again, it's just gonna underserve the east and north side of Odessa because there are no parks. So it looks like to me that's kinda where that's headed, mayor, I don't know what your plans are, but it looks like to me that's a definite need. In this whole plan, besides reworking the ones we've got, we've just, you know, we just spent ten million on the east, uh, west side and. Which is desperately needed, but we need just as much on the north side of town as well, north and east, so that's my opinion.
Steven, the master plan, is there a redesign or, uh, addressing the issue of McKinney? Uh, you know, because there is no league in, 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 in that part of town. So the, the only reason it's being utilized is because the kids from Floyd Gwin are playing there.
Right.
So with, with the loss of, of, of property, what's the future of McKinney?
The center field is a senior field, so it has, the outfield is much further out than what the other two fields are. That's the one really that is closest to Starbright Village Trail.
Yeah.
So what I'd recommend is bringing that outfield fence in and have three little league fields. Bring the asphalt trail in so that we can accommodate Starbright Village still, and that'll give us enough room to be on the edge of the highway. And I don't think we're gonna have a choice actually because the, the new roadway is gonna come right through there anyway. So we're gonna have to probably cut that down some. So we would have three little league fields there and ready to go, and it could be club team.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. Who would utilize those fields? Will it be used? Cause there's no, is it lights there?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
Yes, we have lights there, um.
So it would be utilized?
It, it'd be ready to go, um.
But is there use for it? I mean, it, would a club team use it?
Have utilized it in the past and we need, we would get our recreation group to get a schedule and, and keep up with club teams there.
Okay. Council, any further questions? Discussion? Anything else you'd like to add about the master plan?
That's, it's been long in the making, so.
Last five years, four years?
Yeah, it's been about three years with COVID, it just really. Really took a toll on us.
Mr. Mayor, do we want this on the next council agenda for further discussion or would council like time to, uh, field more questions and provide more input before bringing it back?
I, I would like to field a little more questions. I'd like to talk to some of the associations, cause I mean, um, I'm, I'm, I really don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not. I really don't have an issue, um, council?
I'm, I'm ready to go ahead and adopt.
It is just a master plan. It, there's not, not a contract in this anywhere.
Not granted.
Yeah.
So I would think we could go ahead and vote on the master plan.
It's just the resolution?
I'm in agreement with that.
Counsel, so it's a consensus?
I agree with that as well.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna move on to item, item five, uh, consider bid award for, uh, purchase auto, me, automotive vehicles for various departments. Philip?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is to purchase twenty-five vehicles. Uh, these vehicles are scheduled and budgeted, um, vehicle replacements. Uh, our purchasing department did put out a bid packet for these vehicles and it was distributed to twelve different vendors and we received three bid packet responses back. And we did ensure that all of our local groups received, um, the, uh, the bid packets. Uh, we do have a recommendation to, um, to purchase vehicles from Rush, Rush Truck Center and these would be items one, two, and seven. For a total of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents. Uh, Caldwell Chevrolet for item number six for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. And then Soul Ford for items three, four, and five in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. The total purchase price is one million, eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents. And, uh, as, uh, have we've historically done, we are recommending to council that we utilize local preference to. Uh, be within the three percent bid price for items four and five, which is through Soul Four. You happy to answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
What's the delivery on these?
So we did put, uh, a, a blank on our document for delivery and, and all of them did say up to twenty-four months for delivery.
Wow.
They did say that there was a possibility of getting them in sooner, but I think they're trying to, to cover their in. And I think, uh, Chief Huber is seeing that when it comes to, uh, fire fleet vehicles, uh, police vehicles, and then Chief Kirkie is seeing that as well. So that's, uh, a common we're seeing in with the order of vehicles.
How secure is the price with a twenty-four month lead time?
Sure, so, uh, our purchase order states that we will not, uh, uh, pay anything in, in, anything additional. So they may, uh, cancel the purchase order if they want to increase the price, but we, we, as the city would not, uh, uh, pay anything extra other than what's on our, our purchase order.
So I'll have a two-year-old car when we finally get him one. A vehicle trip, wow, twenty-four.
I just, I had lunch, ran into my neighbor at lunch and he has a machine shop and they tried to find a three-quarter ton pickup and. They finally found one in Dallas, forty thousand miles on it, owed more than the new car cost. So it's, it's happening everywhere. This is happening everywhere, which is ridiculous, forty thousand, you know, forty thousand mile cars, paying a new price for it.
Counsel, any further questions?
Philip, anything else on the side? Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item six, discuss, uh, alternate judges' salary.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, I'm, uh, presenting this, uh, agenda item, uh, for Judge Rodriguez, he's out, uh, today. But he has requested, um, that, uh, council, uh, review the pay for the alternate judges. That, uh, serve, uh, mostly on weekend capacities for municipal court. We have three judges that serve in this role, uh, Mike Holmes. Uh, Stuart McKean and Steve Steen. Uh, they are currently paid fifty-five dollars per hour and they work on Saturdays and Sundays doing the jail arrangements and they're guaranteed. Uh, three hours, uh, per day, and of course, if they exceed those three hours, they will bill for those, those hours. Um, they did state in the, uh, the memo from Judge Rodriguez that, uh, they have not had a, uh, pay increase for these positions and, and over a decade. And they mentioned, uh, Judge Dan Whalen, and I believe Judge Whalen's been gone for about fifteen years. So it's a little longer than, than the decade there, but, um, uh, going from, uh, the recommendation is going from fifty-five dollars an hour to seventy-five dollars an hour. Uh, which would be a budget impact of about six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, uh, annually. And this would be something that would be a supplemental request for, uh, for the budget in the judge's office.
Okay, I was gonna say, so the judge is paying for this?
Yeah, it would have to be a supplemental request that the, that the council would have to approve to, to provide for their budget, yes, sir.
Okay, well, if he's coming out of the budget, he's okay, he can hold them down to the overtime.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if it's approved, it would be out of his budget from this year, correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, and then going forward, it would be a, a budget adjustment that would take place.
Okay. Counsel, questions?
This, you said the increase is six thousand a year?
Six, yes, sir.
Okay.
Judge Rodriguez had brought that, uh, during one of our monthly meetings. And was really concerned, I mean, I think that had been brought up by, by these judges. And, um, and it would be very, very difficult to, I think, find anyone to take their place. For fifty-five. And so, you know, I, I really recommend it, I think that it's.
Who's willing to do it for fifty-five bucks an hour? On the week, on the weekends. On the, uh, fourth of July.
Yeah.
Understand. Counsel, any questions? All right. Philip, anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on to that one. Uh, item seven, discuss infrastructure, council? Um, spoke to Michael about this, uh, wanted to, um, we have the master plan on the, uh, on the, on. Tom, did, did you talk to Michael about the, uh, bring, uh, about the, uh, the rehab plan that we have? I know Michael's out, so, um.
Uh, he mentioned Friday that y'all were looking into the, the.
Yes, simply what I want to be able to do is, you know, we have the master plan, master plan.
Each of the master plans.
Basically, uh, addresses growth.
Well, they also include, uh, rehabilitation.
Yes, and that's, that's something I would like to go back and revisit and, you know, dis- disperse that information. Find a priority list and have a discussion, what is priority, you know, in recent, what we've seen, you know, what happened on, on, on Forty-second. But also we had a twelve-inch break, then we had another inch, eight-inch break here over the weekend. This is all occurring in the summer. I'd like to really go back and revisit our rehab program and, uh, get familiar with what is the priority. You know, what, what's priority in that as far as where this distribution line, transmission lines or auxiliary lines? And, uh, go back and revisit that. Uh, at one point, you know, council interested in, in, in addressing it because that's a heavy, that's a hefty price tag. And so there's no. And so there's no way you can rehab the whole thing, and uh, but the thing is, is there a priority list? And discuss, to start a discussion of where that is in a priority list, and where we find the money to be able to start addressing those issues, because one of the concerns is, is that we're seeing these breaks in the summer. And uh, we've still got, you know, the, uh, winter coming in, and uh, and, but also is, does master plan address any of the valve systems?
There's discussions on it, but uh, we don't have identified specifically which valves or anything like that.
How, how would we go about doing that?
So when we talk about rehabilitation of systems, you're talking hundreds of miles. We've almost got three hundred miles of cast irons in the system. So when we, when you look at the master plan, it will identify that this system has aged throughout. And so when we prioritize it in that, in that essence, I mean, how do you pick between this one and that one, per se? So we, we look at where we're seeing the breaks, and where we're seeing the breaks is where we start to identify, and it's a, it's a very um, uh, fluid system. In the sense that, you know, we have, the council has, since the master plans provides us about five million dollars a year in, in water and sewer rehab, and about five million dollars a year in uh, in street rehab. And so we use those funds to attack those areas that we're seeing these major breaks and things like that. The priority list can morph, and so when we say is there a priority list, uh, let's, let's suggest uh Crane Avenue. So we are rebuilding Crane Avenue. Uh, we're about to replace the water lines before we put the line, or at the same time we do the streets, so that we don't have old pipe in Crane Avenue. But if you look at that pipe in Crane Avenue, it's not popping on us. It's not breaking all the time or anything like that, but it was put in nineteen forty-nine. It is cast iron. You would expect that it's going to go, you know, at some time, and you hate to put a brand-new pavement over those lines. And so that becomes a priority that wasn't necessarily listed as a priority based on breakage history. Um, so priorities are uh fluid when you talk about rehabilitation.
So this is driven by the road, what you're saying? Yeah, that's the one on Crane.
Yeah. Yeah, the main reason that the, now we're using that water money to replace those lines because we're doing roadway. You are gonna get new lines, and you shouldn't have to worry about them for a long time, but those, those become the issues. Valve systems are something that, um, in all municipalities, um, become the first thing that you, you lose track of, and the reason is funding. And I'm not saying that the cities aren't giving us funding. The city has been very, very good, good to us about funding. But what happens is when you start losing personnel, or you don't have enough funding to do operations, you always have to fix the brakes. You always have to make sure the taps are going in. You always have to take care of those functions. They just can't not happen. But going out and operating your valves and keeping up with your valves, although it's really a long-term benefit, becomes a, a low priority, and so you start to lose track of it. And this is true throughout systems, and so, um, when we looked at, um, and so your, your valves start to get lost in the system. And um, uh, the, um, with, with regard to this break, um, what happened was, one, when we look at that, that, that pipe, it's been in since nineteen fifty-three. But there hasn't been a break on that pipe in, in over ten years, and so it wasn't reaching us as a, a priority right now. Now, when it did break, the valve which had operated for us in the past would not operate this time. It, it, it broke. Now, there's lots of things that can happen to valves. They can get corroded over time, not behave well. You can have them uh get stiff, and then all of a sudden you break a stem or something like that. But also, uh, even brand-new valves, you put them in, there's debris in the lines. People may not understand how to recognize that, but you have debris in lines. You can have a new valve go in, and you can have debris get in it and, and not operate in a very short time, but. Operating the valves is a, is the way that you would find out whether you've got valves working or not. What happens over time too for us is these large valves, you become scared to go out and operate them. If you haven't operated a valve in twenty years, and you go out there and you try it, and it gets stuck closed, that may be a worse condition for you than if it, if you didn't operate it. I'm not saying you don't do it. I'm just saying there's a lot of care that has to go into the considerations of how you hap- how it happens. This, this valve wasn't a very bad, is a very, it's an isolated valve. We operated five large, at least five large valves that, that, that first night. Uh, so we had, uh, in our water plant, we operated a butterfly valve. I think it was thirty or thirty-six inch. It operated well. You don't know that it sealed a hundred percent, but it operated well. We had two thirty-inch valves that we operated over at Goldr on Forty Second Street, which is right outside the plant. Both of those appeared to have operated well. They closed according to turns and everything else. Um, this one on, on the twenty-four inch did not, and um, it was the critical one in this case. It was the only one that was gonna get us out of that situation. But um, so all those, those two up at Goldr and this one were all placed about the same time. They're all nineteen fifty-three valves. They're what they call a double disc gate valves. Double disc valves are very heavy valves. They're much more susceptible to corrosion than the valves that we put in nowadays. But uh, anyway, but yes, sir, there's, um, we have in the plans, they identify areas where we see breaks and, and lines that, that, you know, that we would like to try and address. But again, our priorities shift based on where we see our brakes and things, but, and in roadway work and things like that.
Since we're coming into budget time, we're gonna be going into the retreat, Wednesday retreat we're gonna have in July?
Twenty-six, I think.
Twenty-six. Um, I was just like to see if we, you know, we're, you're doing five million dollars in uh rehab every year, right?
Yes.
Minimum. Um, if we need to address, re- address that, is that enough? Do we need to increase it, you know, I, I, I don't know. I just know that, you know, we, we, you know. To me, it wasn't so much the break as it was the valve failure that really caused, you know, you had to make the decision to take the line off, you know, the, the, the plan offline. It wasn't the break, it was, you know, and, and just didn't foresee that. And uh, and you're right, yeah, I mean, the thing is, you're at a risk. You know, the thing is, is do we need to make an assessment of what we're, we've been doing? How long you been, we've been doing five, five million in a?
Since about twenty nineteen, I believe, about that timeframe. About the time we adopted the master plans, the council started to fund those.
Okay. And y'all used all the ACI.
We, we, we are trying. We haven't gotten it all out as quickly as, uh, as we can, but say right now, um, we, we are, we have places to use it, and we are doing it, but we've got right now Crane under design. There's a twelve-inch up on Fifty Seventh and Lancaster, that area that we, y'all just gave us the uh, uh, contract for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we are definitely using it. It just, this first year of getting some of the, these first couple of years.
Just like to be able to start a discussion. We have to, you know, start looking at the valve system as well, as, you know, is it, is it, that's just as important as, as, as the pipe itself?
Oh, yes, the valves are, are, are very important. Our distribution group has worked with valves out in the system, smaller valves that they, they can work with, and they can replace pretty often.
These are all, the five minutes just for the water line, water and sewer? Water and sewer?
Uh.
Or just water, the five minute for the rehab?
Oh, the five million is uh basically water and sewer.
Okay.
We've got some graphics that we can show you of the work that the city's been doing over the last few years, that uh. These are.
At least it's another book.
There's about three, three.
Tom, does our GIS system track valves now? I mean, especially in, you know, the sun's going in.
So one of the things that we're working on, started working on quite a bit this year, we've looked at it in the past, uh, we've not been able to fund it yet. It's an asset management system.
So asset management systems work with GIS generally or GIS-based, but our GIS system has all of our valves, I'll say all, the majority of our valves located. Uh, there are some valves that we don't, that may have been uh in place that have been either covered by concrete or asphalt or other things, and we don't know specifically where some of those are. Um, but the majority of the valves, we do know where they are, and we are able to, to get to them and those types of things. But an asset management system is something that uh, city manager's offices were, this is to help us with, to look into, and IT, and um, asset management system lets you do work order systems in which that valve, every time you operate it, you can document that you operated the valve, how many turns you got on the valve, whether it closed, whether it didn't, you had any problems, and then it'll flag it in the GIS. And so it creates work orders for you that you can do to try and work on valves, similar with uh all of our plant equipment and things like that. So uh, uh, fire hydrants, manholes, and those types of things.
But we don't.
Although our GIS is really quite, quite, I think you would find that a lot of people find our GIS to be exceptional. Um, it's uh, it doesn't, we don't have that asset management work order system.
So it would be more feasible and realistic to have a, to replace aging valves over replacing the mu- the hundreds of miles of, of pipe, cause at least then we can shut off the, the water out there, right? And then once it, if it does break, I mean, we, we, at least we have the capability now to.
It's hard to say that one will be better than the other. It's a, it's a combination of both, you know, in some places your valves may be in pretty good shape, and so then you, you know, your pipeline is your own issue there. And then there's sometimes when your pipelines are gonna be less critical than your valves. It's always good to have valves that work, but again, and I don't mean to make this a- Valves are one of those things, you can't live with them and you can't live without them. They, they are, uh, I've had brand-new valves go in before, and uh, if you have debris in a line, and, and all, all pipes have some debris in them, whether it be a line break and some rocks got in it, or whether it be something that happened while they were doing construction. Uh, I know of one valve that we couldn't shut one time, and um, when we went down there and inside the valve grooves where the, where the gate slides and that type of thing, we found a, a um, copper type of piece that looked like it came out of a valve's um, packing system. And so, you know, I mean, you can have things that got in there, and so um, whenever you go in and work on these concrete lines, you have concrete that breaks loose on the interior. They're lined on the inside with concrete. You'll have concrete that breaks loose, and so I'm not saying that it's not important. It is important, and to have the valves working is tremendous benefit for us. Whenever we have a break, and if the valve doesn't work, you're gonna drop back to three more valves, because water valves are going everywhere. And so uh, they, they are, they are a critical aspect. That's true.
Counsel, any other questions?
No, I wanna commend you guys on the work that you do. Um, you know, I had not been on the council long when we adopted this last master plan, and you had explained everything so well and kind of, you know, reassured everyone that, like I said, no pun intended, but it is a fluid, you know, um, process to where if you do identify lines that are in need of, of bumping someone else off the list, that, that you take care of it. And I think that this last one was um, an unforeseen series of events.
That one was in especially bad situation, and um, I thank y'all for all the support. Y'all have all been great, and y'all always have, and, and very, very lucky here with you on that. Um, we do want to try and do better always, and so we will try to, try to look at that a lot closer. Well, maybe we'll start checking our valves a little more closely, what we can come up with, because they do need to, the big valves from time to time, you certainly do need to consider them. This one was interesting. Uh, the barrel uh looks beautiful. I mean, it's a nineteen fifty-three pipe, cast iron, but it's solid. That was a solid pipe. And uh, the interior had a light rust layer in it. The pipe looked beautiful, except for this huge spiral crack that came around the outside.
Drop back.
And so, you know, um, it, it, you know, a lot of cast irons, especially getting into smaller sizes, you'll see huge pe- tuberculation in the inside, growth of the steel being. And, and this one just didn't look like that, but it either had some kind of, we didn't have a, we didn't have a uh, a thrust issue, we didn't have a, a hammer or anything that we could see. It looks like it must have been some type of soil movement that finally put enough stress on the pipe barrel that it, that it gave way.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Have, have you read any reports or speculations that these little earthquakes could cause issues within our water system, water sewer system?
Uh, I would think anytime you have those kinds of movements, those are huge movements. Anything that moves soil like that, and soil has tremendous strength and pressure when it moves. Um, I would think they would be, but I, I would certainly say that, I haven't read a whole lot specifically to it, but I would say that it certainly could have an effect on things. It certainly could.
That's what I had wondered.
So, Tom, this five million dollars is, is for water and sewer, but then is not, it does or does not include roads? Is that a separate?
No, that's separate. The roads are another five million.
How much on the roads?
We have five million on the roads.
On the roads as well, which, which we know is not enough, which, which just brings me to, to, to a point which I think now is a good time to bring it up, cause uh, I've been looking at this for quite some time, and, and uh, uh, I've asked Cindy to run some numbers, and we've talked upon council. I have discovered that uh, uh, for infrastructure, number one, we, we've got our ten point three million dollars from ARPA is, is in the bank, correct Cindy? Uh, as, and we still haven't funded ORMC, cause there's some issues with some of the agencies on that, but we're expecting the three million back from Medical Center shortly, I think, uh, from what uh Russell Tippin has indicated. Uh, I mean, my suggestion to the council is on this infrastructure thing is that, you know, we've given a lot of money away, but this thirteen, fourteen million bucks, uh, we need to keep for, for infrastructure. We've, we've got, uh, we've got road issues that, uh, I just can't tell you the complaints and the growth of the city, and I've looked at it, I've looked at it extensively because uh, it affects the north side of town as much or more than a lot of other people, but you can see, if you look at the road system, we can see that with us getting fodry done, if it ever starts, understand there've been some delays, uh, just teasing, just teasing.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah, I know. Everybody's talking about the book, this book. Anyway, uh, w- once that road gets completed and the overpass gets done at three thirty-eight, it just looks like to me, trying to be more visionary rather than trying to be reactionary. It looks like to me that Yukon from Parks Bill to three thirty-eight, and three thirty-eight to three eighty-five has got to be a high priority for the traffic of this city. Uh, that's gonna be a major thoroughfare. We got a developer doing a new uh shopping center at the corner of Grandview and Yukon, uh, which you'll have to participate in the road re- designs there. It goes down to Dawn, and Dawn is certainly something that needs to be carried through all the way to Eighty Seventh Street, just to complete some kind of a semblance of moving traffic in that part of town, cause it's grown so fast. And I can see Yukon, if you could ever get the county to a halfway agree, I could see Yukon going from Kermit Highway all the way to, of course, Midland's coming from the east, Midland County, from the airport to the overpass at one ninety-one, which where Yukon hooks in, so you can see Yukon being a five, I can anyway, which is my vision, all the way from, at least from three eighty-five, carry it all the way through to that overpass at one ninety-one and on down to the airport.
Yes.
Uh, there's lots of parts, moving parts at play here that kind of fit into, you know, I think a grand scheme, and it looks like to me that's something we need to address and address quickly. It won't, it'd be expensive. I think you've got those roads prioritized. Uh, I saw a rough draft. I haven't seen the price tags on all of them, but I think.
Yes, sir.
I think from what I learned, that Parks Bill to three thirty-eight's a twenty-five million, thirty million dollar project.
Yes, sir.
So we've got some definite needs for infrastructure money and lots of it.
Yes, sir.
And we've got thirteen, fourteen million coming, but this is the grand idea on infrastructure, and this is gonna kinda probably upset you a little bit, Mayor, but we uh, I found out in reading uh, and checking with legal as well, that uh, the Odessa Development銀 and could, and checking with legal as well, that, uh, the Odessa Development Corporation, uh, that we can, uh, we can float revenue bonds through ODC for roads, for infrastructure. They're gonna probably have close to thirty million dollar surplus before commi, after commitments, uh, at the end of this fiscal year. Uh, that's a lot of money. Uh, Midland, for instance, MDC takes thirty percent of the monthly income from, uh, MDC and it goes strictly to, uh, infrastructure every month. So if you're getting a million bucks a month, they're getting three hundred thousand dollars. And that's great, but if you've got as many current needs as we do, and, and I'm gonna call them an emergency because we're moving a lot of traffic. The census doesn't show what the population is truly is. I don't think there's, I think we all can agree, uh, I think, Mayor, that there's more than a hundred and fourteen thousand people rolling around in the city. Uh, I don't know how, they all got missed, but they're missed. But the traffic sure bears out the fact that we've got more than that. So it looks like to me that it's time for this council and ODC to get together. And I was planning to wait to do this to budget workshop, but since you had it on the agenda today, uh, we, we can do a pretty big project with revenue bonds, uh, out of ODC. I've talked to David Boutin about it, uh, and he then, he was gonna talk to the, the rest of the, uh, ODC board. I, uh, and I've also talked to Melanie Holman, cause she's my representative on that board. But they neither one, they had, they neither one had a problem with revenue bonds. They'd rather do that than have thirty percent taken out of their check every month. If you take out, if, if you, if you spend thirty-five million dollars or twenty-year amortization, it runs about two million dollars a year, principal and interest. And they're, they're dragging in twelve to fifteen million a year. So cash flow wise, it doesn't affect them in what they're able to reserve or other projects down the road. Plus the fact they've got a large cash surplus right now. So this is something that has got to be talked about and I, I think it's, uh, paramount that we try to get ahead of the curve here, uh, for the two years I've been on this council. So far, all we've done is play catch-up. And it's time to, it's time to, you know, punt the ball over the fence and go get it. And that means making some plans and dedicating some money and getting some of these projects, uh, uh, identified. Doing a Yukon road from that length we're talking about creates a retail all the way down it. Uh, you go to Yukon and Grandview down to the, to the west and, or down Grandview to the south. Those are retail opportunities, more sales tax. It's good for everybody, I mean, everybody wins in that scenario, including ODC. Uh, and so that's just kind of what I've been, uh, privately working on, trying to get ready to bring it to the council. But this, since you had it on the agenda today, cause I did see a couple of your interviews, Mayor, where you, where you indicated you were kind of leaning towards a bond issue for infrastructure. And, uh, and I don't have a problem with that either, other than the fact that I just remember old Bill Elms' uh, theory that you gotta watch bond issues cause you're always gonna have five thousand votes against them, period. So you gotta pick a time and you gotta have voter turnout. And I think we saw that with the school board's election. They had eight thousand some odd people cast votes and four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six were no's. So that old adage, it, it, like Bill told me that back in nineteen ninety-one. And today it obviously still holds true. So, uh, we've got to be very careful with something like that. You've gotta have a PAC sell it, we can't do anything with it. It, it's a very tough road to hoe, in my opinion. But we do have a good revenue stream at ODC. We've got this thirteen million we've got coming back from ARPA. So, uh, that's kind of where I am with infrastructure and, and, uh, like I said earlier on, and other deal is that we've got some private people like Larry Bellwell to help us sports complexes and so forth. Uh, so we've got some good things going, but we sure need to be proactive and, and get some things on the table and get some things moving, in my opinion. I don't think, I don't think we have any more time to wait. It's no different than the water plant. Those, those pipes don't mean anything, a water plant doesn't work, pipes don't mean anything. That bunch of air. So we, I think we got our roads right on that one and now it's time to move on and get some, some roads done, in my opinion. Anyway, that's just my two cents worth. Sorry to bore y'all with that, but it was time to bring it up because it's, it's, it's really on my mind. Drive that side of town, though Tom does and I don't know the rest of you. Yeah, we, we've got so much congestion over there, no parks and that's not any park traffic or anything else. We just got people, schools, we got Fifty-Sixth Street, you know?
Well, it's, uh, roads are an issue all over town.
Yes, in every part of town.
Yeah, and so, but, you know, I don't disagree that we do have to do some priorities. I think the, the dynamic here in the, uh, slippery slope is, you know, how do you, how do you go about in, 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 uh, in, in paying for it all? That's always gonna, it, I mean, it's been every council's issue. Council, any, uh, further discussion? Anything else you'd like to see or discuss or any information to, uh? This is just a simple discussion at this point. You know, the thing is, is that, you know, one thing that everybody was asking about, what is the rehab? You know, and you know this well, you know, we discussed it so many times, you know? How is it that you couldn't see this happening? Three hundred miles of pipe, you know? You, you go fix it when it breaks? I, I wish we could predict it. If it did, this would have never occurred. And so, but the thing is, is that, uh, it just feels like, you know, I'm trying to ask people in the community, just feel like, hey, look, we're not doing anything. We're not staring, we're not oblivious to the problem. The staff is sitting here, we do five million dollar rehab, do we need to up that? I mean, we are, we are aware, we're discussing it, we're not sitting on our hands and the council is addressing it. But in the end, it matters is that, yeah, we have to be proactive and two, people still want that low tax break. Well, you can't have both, I mean, they have to pay for it somehow.
Yes, well, I haven't, I haven't talked, and none of my comments are mentioning taxes. I'm talking about using revenue bonds, you know, through current cash flows. So that's a, that's a very positive way to get, way to go, in my opinion. Cause I don't wanna raise taxes any more than anybody else, cause property values, Mayor, are going up anyway. And that's raising taxes without doing anything.
I understand, that's a whole different subject.
Yeah, it is, it is, but.
We can spend days on that one.
Yes, sir.
Council, Tom?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I would add to that, and we're talking about these infrastructure costs. When Ms. Willis and Ms. White and I were all sworn onto the council, uh, the staff, the city staff brought to us a presentation that lasted for several meetings and it was like a Christmas wish list. It blew me away. I was trying to remember and maybe you can remember, didn't it total about nine hundred million dollars that the city has needs for?
Billion dollars. Like one point one billion.
You know, I, with a, divide that by a hundred and twenty thousand people. You know, there's no way, there's only X numbers of dollars. So, you know, what we need to be discussing ultimately is how we're gonna pay for all of this. But I, I, that, that presentation blew me away. Everybody gave their wish list.
It was about one point one billion and identified about seven hundred million. Fifty. I mean, it's, it's a lot and that, and y'all cut it down, you know?
Well, it was just a wish list.
We appreciate the conversation very much and y'all's thoughts on it. And we are, we have had a couple, I mean, we've had two bad ones, definitely, and, and, and more this year, I guess. But, uh, the, the two that we, the ones I'm thinking of are the one on the north and then the one at Citywide. And we, we, we don't want those to keep happening.
Tell you one thing, everybody's a lot more ability, they see water running down a gutter.
Yes, sir.
And I, I got calls on, what was that one o, over there on, uh, Adams and all that? It was with Friday, Saturday, Saturday? Yeah, that was, I wouldn't even up there, I was there getting calls.
I just wanna touch on these real quick. This, this, this is just rehab stuff. And, um, so like the front one is on roadways. Uh, the, the, the stuff that's in green is, is our roads that we've, we've been, that we've done work on in the last ten years at the most.
So these are, these are your rehabs right here? So you're going ahead, since you're gonna get a new street, you wanna, you go ahead and do the, uh, the, the pipe, the one in green?
Right, those were done already, those have been done in the past. Uh, the, the ones in black are the ones that we have projecting forward. Uh, Crane is on here, Crane is number four, I think, shown there. Um, so yes, as we're doing these roads, say Tanglewood, we're doing right this, uh, we're working on right now. Hope to bid out pretty quickly. Tanglewood doesn't have a lot of water line work under it that we have to worry about, but does have a little bit. We're gonna, we'll have a little on it. Thirty-first Street, which we're about to redo, that one, we're, we're pretty good shape on uti, our utilities there. I think, uh, we have a gas line that needs to be relocated. The next one is, um, is water, uh, sewer type work that we've done in the last five years or so under this newer five million really, probably only really three years or so. You'll see we've done quite a bit of work along Dixie, we had a lot of lines along that area. Also on here, up on the Fifty-seventh and, and, uh, near Andrews Highway there, that's a twelve-inch line. That's one breaks, that one's got a tremendous number of breaks on it. It's one that you've just alarmed, uh, given us a contract to have designed. It's got Crane down here and then Tanglewood over there. Those are the ones that are under design, those three. The, uh, the others have been done. And we continue to move forward with our contract with, with our, uh, Madrid contracting. He does work for us in these ways, so we're able to put him on projects like that. The third one is based, uh, is work that was, and this one is twenty sixteen printout, so it's not absolutely current. But, um, there's not a whole lot more to it. This is the two thousand seven bond issue. And this was the work that was done off that bond, which was about sixty-five million dollars worth of water and sewer work. Um, this, as I said, this shows about forty-eight million of it. There was some work in plants and different things like that.
So it's been, the to, total's been about sixty-five?
Yes, sir, the total was sixty-five million on that. But again, th- those are big dollar numbers and everything else, but when you distribute them out, it, it, uh, there's, there's a lot of system.
We still got a lot more to go. Tom, thank, appreciate you, thank you. We're gonna move on to item eight, discuss, uh, code of conduct. Council? There's no discussion, man?
Get control of this.
Well, I, you know, I, I thought we had the consensus to move on for adoption. I, I, I asked, you know, why is it back on the work session? If there's gonna be a discussion? All right, we're moving on then. Seeing that there's no more business before this city council, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion by council member Sprouse, second by council member White. All in favor, indicated by saying aye. All opposed, indicated by saying nay. Motion passed, you men, we are adjourned.
We have certain obligations.